Welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the City Commission, July 15, 2025. At this time, I'll ask the City Clerk Beth Davis to please call the row.
Commissioner Jeff Sanford.
Here.
Commissioner Sharon Neesmith.
Here.
Mayor Tom Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Curtis Maglinger.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bob Glenn.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask you to please stand, if you're able, remove your cap, for the pledge and the invocation by Commissioner Sharon Neesmith.
Bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for everything that you've done for us today, and in the future, and in the past. Help us all remember of your blessings, and all the good things that happened, and all the ways that you help us through when we knew we needed your help. Take care of all of our personnel, our city police, our firemen, and our street people, everyone that's out there trying to make sure we give a good community for everyone that lives here. In your name, amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its throne.
Okay, next item on the agenda is retirement recognitions. We have quite a few, unfortunately. So, City Manager, you're gonna have to fill some spots, aren't you?
We will do our best.
Not in attendance tonight is Norman Byers. Please join us in celebrating the distinguished career of the lead telecommunications Norman Byers, who will be retiring effective July the 31st, 2025, after nearly 20 years of dedicated service. Throughout his tenure, Lead Byers has exemplified unwavering professionalism and a steadfast commitment to excellence. His outstanding work ethic has been recognized through numerous performance commendations. Over the last 12 years, he has served as both a lead telecommunications and a certified communications training officer, playing a vital role in mentoring and developing the next generation of telecommunications and supervisors. Lead Byers' contributions have been profoundly impacted our department. His extensive knowledge, calm leadership, and dedication to training and development have made him an invaluable asset. While his presence will be deeply missed, his legacy will continue to inspire and influence our team for years to come. We extend our heartfelt appreciation to Norman for his remarkable service and wish him all the best in his retirement. So, even though he's not here, guess what? And I'm gonna let our whiz bang, City Clerk, read these others, and I'm gonna come down and hand your thingamajig to you.
Okay. Sergeant Aaron Hamilton began his career with the Owensboro Police Department in October 2005, following his honorable service in the United States Army. Early in his career, he became a police training officer, taking on the responsibility of mentoring and training newly hired officers. He took great pride in preparing these officers to become capable and competent members of the department. While he had been an informal leader in the department for many years, in March 2021, he was promoted to the rank of sergeant and initially assigned to the patrol division. He later transitioned to the investigations division, where he spent the remainder of his career overseeing the general investigations unit. In this role, he supported his detectives throughout their cases, ensuring a high standard of professionalism and efficiency was maintained. Throughout his distinguished career, Sergeant Hamilton served in a variety of important roles, including police training officer, drug recognition expert, evidence collection technician, emergency response team member, and supervisor of the honor guard. His dedication to his country, the city of Owensboro, and the Owensboro Police Department has made a lasting impact on the lives of countless citizens, fellow officers, and detectives. Sergeant Hamilton's leadership, service, and commitment will be remembered with great respect and appreciation as he embarks on his well-earned retirement.
Thank you. This is a tribute of outstanding service. Here I recognize Sergeant Aaron Hamilton. I extend this grateful appreciation for your outstanding service, safe with a record of honor, away by the city of Owensboro. Okay. Thank you, George.
It's been a great 20-year career. I'd like to thank all the people that helped me. I appreciate all the opportunities you've afforded me in my career. It's been a great life with you. It's your turn now. Carry the torch forward.
All right, good job. Thank you.
Jennifer Hodges. Recreation Facility Manager Jennifer Hodges has been the cornerstone of the city pool in Smothers Park since May 9, 1991, a commendable 34 years of unwavering full-time service. Her dedication and passion have left an indelible mark on our community. From the early days as a seasonal lifeguard, pool manager, and ice rink manager, Jennifer took on immense responsibility and proved herself to be a smart, hard-working, and loyal team member. Her work ethic, no doubt being taught to her by her father Gary Ayer, Jennifer understood the value of hard work and always took pride in her endeavors. Jennifer managed not just one, but at one time, three public pools and a seasonal ice rink, before settling into her current role managing Cravens and Combat Pools in Smothers Park. These spaces have become more than just recreational areas. They've transformed into communal havens where families create memories, children learn to swim, and neighbors come together. Through Jennifer's efforts, these facilities have flourished. The pools have seen countless swim lessons and summer joys. The spray park has echoed with children's laughter, and Smothers Park has been a backdrop to numerous community events and serene moments alike. But beyond the tangible achievements, the intangible qualities that truly set Jennifer apart. Her effort, role as team leader, and her huge heart has characterized her team with the city, and has left a mark on hundreds of seasonal staff and park patrons. Colleagues often speak of Jennifer's hands-on approach, her willingness to go the extra mile, whether it was addressing a maintenance issue late at night, or mentoring a new staff member with patience and wisdom. As we bid farewell to Jennifer, we also celebrate the legacy she built, a legacy of community engagement, safe and welcoming recreational spaces, and a team inspired by her heart. Jennifer, your retirement is well-deserved, but know that your presence will be deeply missed. May this next chapter be filled with relaxation, new adventures, and the satisfaction of a career that has truly made a difference.
Thank you. This is a great day of outstanding service to Jennifer Hodges. I'm grateful appreciation for all you've done for the city of Owensboro. Okay. You're welcome to speak.
Oh, well, from the number of years I've worked there for, obviously, you can see that I enjoy what I do. I am gonna miss it, especially my work people. So, thank you for giving me this opportunity.
See you again.
Yes, see you.
Testing.
Barbara Keller, OPD Administrative Aid. Barbara began her career with the Owensboro Police Department in January 2002 as a secretary in the Criminal Investigations Division. She was promoted to administrative aide in 2006 and served as an integral part of the Owensboro Police Department Administration while working directly with three different police chiefs for 19 of her 23 and 1/2 years of service. Barbara was proficient in her role as administrative aide, and she consistently delivered professional customer service to internal and external customers of OPD. Throughout her time with OPD, she worked diligently to hone her skills in order to complete all of her assigned tasks in an effort and effective manner. She has been a true asset to OPD. In law enforcement circles around the country, it has been said that patrol is the backbone of any police department. Well, Barbara Keller has been the backbone of this police administration for over two decades. We thank her for her dedicated service throughout the past 23 and 1/2 years and wish her nothing but the absolute best in her retirement. Job well done.
All right.
Tucked up to say anything?
Come on. There you go.
It's been a real great ride. I've enjoyed my job. I've worked since I was 17 years old in an office environment, and this is by far the best job I've ever had because I've had the absolute best boss sitting over in the corner. And I know one day he's gonna walk out the door and I'm beating him out because I don't want to work for another chief. And I'm looking forward to spending time with my family right there, so.
All right, good deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Jeremy Mulligan. Lieutenant Jeremy Mulligan began his law enforcement career in 2005, serving 20 years at the Owensboro Police Department. During his years of service to the citizens of our community, Lieutenant Mulligan has served in numerous positions and leadership roles with the Owensboro Police Department. Lieutenant Mulligan served as a police training officer, commander of the hazardous device unit, training unit supervisor, patrol supervisor, and accreditation lieutenant. Lieutenant Mulligan is a Kentucky Law Enforcement Council certified instructor and has provided in-service training to veteran officers, as well as an instructor at the OPD Academy. Among other awards, Lieutenant Mulligan received the Exceptional Service Award in 2010 and 2012. Lieutenant Mulligan's commitment to the city of Owensboro and Owensboro Police Department has positively impacted countless citizens and officers. We thank him for his service to our community.
Chief, Mayor, it's been a great career. Like to go out on top, like to go out not hurt, blow my hair. So, it's been a fantastic career, good time to go.
I'll say you achieved a lot.
I did it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Greg Stepp, mechanic. He began his journey with the city in October of 1998. Early on, he earned the nickname Pup, a name that stuck with him throughout his 27 years of dedicated service. Over the years, Greg has become incredibly skilled, not only in mechanical work, but also in machining, equipment design, and making modifications. His true specialty, however, lies in electrical and electronic systems, a field in which he's become an irreplaceable expert. Greg has given us more than just his knowledge and experience, he's given us friendship. Anyone who's ever worked with Greg knows that if you bring him a problem, whether it's related to work, a personal vehicle, or a piece of equipment, he's always quick to jump in and help. His generosity, patience, and problem-solving spirit will be deeply missed. Greg isn't slowing down in retirement. He's got some exciting projects lined up, including a high-tech battery-powered camper he's building, and a boat he's restoring and modifying for himself and his wife Shannon. They're ready to hit the road or the water and explore wherever their hearts take them. Greg, we wish you a long, joyful, and healthy retirement. May your travels be smooth and your adventures many.
I'll just round my house. Do I like to say something?
Just thank you to the city and all the fine employees that I've got to work with through the years, and thank you. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, the next item on the agenda is urban and community forestry assistant grant update. Amanda Rogers, Parks Director, and Adam Wright, Grounds Manager. Is that your name and address? No.
Well, hello, Mayor. Commissioner, thanks for giving me the opportunity to share an update about the grant that you all had authorized us to write several months back through municipal order here at the commission meeting. We did receive that grant, so I'm here to tell you a little more about what the plan is and how things will proceed. So, this grant we received was $84,303, and it was funded through the Inflation Reduction Act and the USDA Forest Service through the Urban and Community Forestry Program. It's basically a partnership with the Kentucky Division of Forestry. So, when we talk about this grant, you might wonder what urban tree canopy is, so let's cover that for a second. Everybody's gone to the internet and looked at a picture from overhead at a piece of property. And when you look at that piece of property, maybe the driveway is blocked out through a tree canopy, or part of the street is blocked out. So, what you see, that canopy, those tree limbs, branches, and leaves, that's what makes an urban tree canopy. So, urban tree canopies are really important in communities, and environmentalists kind of think of those as a gauge of how they judge how healthy an environment or an ecology is in your community. They're important for lots of reasons, from the economical, environmental, and social reasons, but from reducing heat in your community to improving the air quality, intercepting stormwater runoff, as well as just creating shade in pleasant areas and making the community more aesthetically pleasing.
With the data he compiles, he will give to us and we will store it in a tree inventory software program where we can in turn use our GIS mapping systems to map and locate each individual tree by species and by health. And then the next thing we'll do is to mitigate any potential risk. With the data compiled, we can mitigate any risk and prioritize any tree that poses potential threat to personal safety, property, and buildings. When we do that, then we'll implement mitigation strategies such as pruning, cabling, and indefinite tree removal. Moving on to the next one is putting a strategic tree removal plan in action. What we'll do is prioritize any trees in this category to where if they are posing imminent danger to public safety, buildings, and property, we will remove those immediately, disposing of those as economically or environmentally friendly as possible, turning those into mulch or compost. enhance Owensboro's urban tree canopy. With that, what we'll do is make a plan for all ten different locations, the parks, and in that plan, we will acquire various types of native hardwoods and evergreen trees. We'll involve the community through various tree planting activities. That'll give them a sense of ownership and stewardship of our land and our parks. And then finally, the arborist denial will sit down and draw up a set of guidelines, regulations, policies, and procedures to ensure that all of our trees and tree canopies will be managed properly, both new and old.
So Adam and I will be working as a team along with lots of other city staff within both of our departments to implement this grant and the objectives as part of the goals that we're working towards. He's gonna be the brains behind the operations in the sense of the strategic planning along with that certified arborist that we'll be securing. Currently, the step that we're at in the process is we have sent out requests for quotes from the arborist. We pulled arborist off of the ISA site to ensure we were getting one that was certified in our area. We're also looking for an arborist that's certified in municipalities and utilities, and there are people that specialize in that, so we can make sure that we minimize any interference with that as we do additional plantings and as the canopy grows, planning and preparing for that, so we have avoidance of issues in the future with utilities. Adam will be working on that inventory assessment, removal, and planning, and I'll be doing a lot of the events and activities. So the public education, the preparing, working with our marketing team to prepare each and every event that we'll do as part of this strategy. This is a two-year grant process, and we'll have planting and activities this fall. We anticipate at least one activity in the fall. We'll have two activities in the following spring, and then we'll have another fall activity in 2026. So this will be an ongoing project, and a big part of the goal of this project will be additional fresh and new plantings in our community. So we've gotta go to plant a hundred and fifty trees as part of this process, which I'd love to be able to plant two or three hundred more, but with each tree you plant, there's maintenance that comes along with ensuring that that tree will grow healthy and stay at that location for years to come. So we're really gonna focus our energy on ensuring that everything that we do and the efforts that we make early through this process are rewarded through ensuring healthy trees for future generations. So I think that completes our presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
You have a timeframe?
We will be working on this at some level through fall of 2026 to the end of 2026.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I just got one.
Okay, one.
What type of trees, given climate change and how we keep getting these severe storms which tend to damage and destroy trees, what have, what have you found, or will you wait for your ISA expert to tell you, are the types of trees that are the hardiest, that would be the best choice for our area?
Well, that is definitely not my expertise area.
You're not a tree person?
I, I love trees, but I can't tell you which tree is best to plant. I can defer to Adam, see if he wants to answer that, but that will be part of what our ISA arborist comes to town. They will actually do soil samples at locations to determine the health of the soil, what type of soil is there, to determine which tree will fit that location best, because what we plant at Moneta's Lee might not be best for what we need at Chautauqua Park. It could be different, not just because of the climate, but also because of the soil of that particular location. Adam, you have anything you wanna add?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Neesmith?
Amanda, is there also a plan that look at, like, the trees downtown that have been damaged or replaced that are, you know, when you walk, when you walk or drive down Second Street, there's some trees that still have a bag on them for the last three years, making them stay alive, but they're only about two foot tall. So will there be some way of making some uniformity or for our streets downtown?
So the grant particularly, and the funds allotted for this specific, the goals of this grant are only at those ten locations and Second Street, and those tree bins along Second Street are not part of this grant. However, the policy that Adam will be working on with the arborist for maintaining trees, looking at trees and analyzing trees on a regular basis, that policy will go into effect, and he will utilize that policy as he analyzes all those trees throughout our community that he and his group are responsible for maintaining.
Sycamore, big fan of sycamores. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you all.
Ms. Rogers. Elevator safety. Lieutenant Chad Johnson, Fire Department, first, you're up.
All right. Good afternoon, I'm Lieutenant Chad Johnson with the Owensboro Fire Department. I've been on the fire department about ten years this October. Over the past couple weeks, we completed our annual elevator training. It takes roughly thirty-six hours to go over the actual classroom portion and the hands-on portion for our whole entire department. Towards the end of last week, we were wrapping it up, and I got a phone call from Chief Howard, and he asked me to give a little spiel here tonight on kinda elevator safety and kinda some of the stuff we do as well as first responders. Of course, I told him I'd be glad to, so I kinda condensed my information down in a small little presentation, kinda hitting the highlights on some stuff. And I was going over it this morning, actually, and it kinda hit me like a ton of bricks that I'm gonna scare everybody in this room, they're never gonna ride, ride an elevator again. And that's definitely not my goal here. Our goal here is to basically kinda show you, put yourself in the, in the eyes of the first responder on kinda what we deal with on the outside of the elevator if you were to be stuck on the inside, and some other things that you can do if you are on a stalled elevator. So kinda some of the dangers, according to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, incidents involving elevators and escalators result in approximately thirty fatalities annually in the United States. I always include this in my PowerPoint every year when I'm teaching the fire department. Basically, some of this can kinda come routine to us, and we definitely don't want that, especially in the middle of the night on some of these calls. It kinda comes natural to us, it kinda comes easy, and we definitely always have to keep in mind that there's always a pretty big danger and a potential for us getting hurt, let alone potential occupants of an elevator. An additional seventeen thousand serious injuries occur each year. This is definitely something we don't want to happen to any, anybody, like I said. Injuries those working on around elevators account for nearly half of the deaths that occur in elevator emergencies. There's all kinds of videos on the internet and stuff of potentially these things going wrong. We definitely don't want that here in the city. So for risks for passengers, this is one example, a seven-year-old boy from Ohio passed away in a residential elevator accident in 2022 after being trapped between an elevator car and an elevator shaft in a vacation rental home. Emergency workers responded only to find the child without a pulse upon arrival, despite a swift effort to remove him, resuscitation efforts were unsuccessful. So this kinda goes in our, in our view of potentially the unknown of what we're going on. This is one reason we train every year, we put a lot of, a lot of time into this, that way as soon as we roll, roll up to an elevator alarm, boots hit the ground, everybody has a job, we know exactly what to do, and essentially we waste no time for the actual emergency going on inside, whether that's, we have a diabetic patient inside that their sugar got low, or we have a cardiac arrest and the elevator stalled. Basically, we're on our A-game and no time is wasted. So let alone risks to first responders, the picture on the left is a counterweight. If it's a traction elevator, it's gonna have this counterweight, and essentially as the car goes up, this weight helps the car go up just with gravity. These counterweights are anywhere from five to ten thousand pounds, and it's a big risk for us if we have to get inside the shaft essentially and pull people out of a top hatch. These are kinda called like the silent killers in the elevator world, and if we were to stick our arm out or lean against the wall of a shaft or anything, these could potentially come down, and they're completely quiet. So it's definitely a danger to us, I preach this big in class, just to keep on the lookout, and it's another reason that we kinda changed our policies to where we lock out the elevators next to the elevator we're working on if we are inside of a shaft. The picture on the right is just a, an elevator hoistway, there's a lot of dangers for us inside there as far as, you know, moving, moving parts, belts, cables, and a lot of high voltage as well. A lot of these elevators, it takes four hundred and eighty volts of electricity to run these things. Okay, so why do elevators stall? A lot of the time, it's human error, we go to a lot of the hotels downtown and stuff, and a lot of the time, it's kids jumping up and down. And essentially, these elevators, they do everything they can to keep the passengers inside safe, and as soon as somebody jars the car or jumping up and down, it senses that something's potentially gonna go wrong, so therefore it shuts it down. So a lot of the times, they're doing exactly what they're designed to do, even though it kinda causes a problem for us and you inside of an elevator. A lot of the time, it's equipment malfunction, power failure. The good thing with this, a lot of times we go on this, the power glitch in a part of Owensboro, and a lot of the times, by the time we get there, the power comes back on and the elevator restore. A lot of the times, the people get off pretty quick, which is good. Lack of preventative maintenance, it's very expensive to have these elevator techs come out and work on these elevators. So that's one thing that we always talk to whenever we go to some of these elevator alarms, that we talk to the business owners and the people there, and kinda tell them, a lot of the times, if we know what caused the elevator to actually stall out, we try to keep them updated to talk to them. A lot of the time, it's overloading, there's always a placard inside of an elevator when you get on, I don't know if you noticed it, kinda showing the max weight that this car is designed for, they're all different. So you always wanna kinda take a look at that. I think one time, we pulled out almost eighteen volleyball players from a downtown hotel. So if you do get on an elevator and it feels overloaded, definitely take the next one or the stairs. Ninety percent of elevator alarms are caused by door sensors. We see this a lot in a lot of assisted facilities, assisted living facilities, a lot of the times, wheelchairs that bump the doors, and people get on the elevator, it starts to move, and then it, the sensors aren't aligned, and essentially shuts it down, and then people are trapped. So we see that a lot as well. So our response here at OFD, flashing back to 2021, we had three members trained at elevator emergency operations level. This class was in New York, there's not a lot of classes offered around here, so we sent three guys there, and basically just got a, a basic learning on kinda how elevators operate. This kinda opened our eyes up to some stuff that we potentially could have been doing to make it a lot more safer. So the next year, we sent the same three members back, and they got their elevator emergency technician, I was one of them, and then basically, we learned to, if we had to perform an actual elevator rescue and get inside an elevator shaft, how to do it safely for our guys and for the potential occupants. So '22 was a big year for us, we purchased the actual safety equipment that we didn't have, we trained all of our personnel on this. It took a couple weeks to get everybody to the same level, and then we updated our response strategy as well. We don't just send one engine company with four personnel on it. We actually have our Rescue One Truck dispatched to every elevator call with that corresponding engine, so we have a, a minimum of six people, which is about what it takes to perform an actual rescue if we have to. In 2023, we responded to thirty-three elevator rescues, and then in 2024, we saw that number drop to twenty-four. I do think a lot of this was because most of our guys are kinda being aware of like what's going on now, and we're a lot more trained up on them, so we're actually helping these business owners when we go on them. Like, if we realize that the elevator is overloaded, we're talking to them and telling them, hey, here's the issue. A lot of the times, kids jump up and down, like we talked about while ago, and it causes the elevator to stall. So we, we've been talking to these, these business owners and people who own the businesses, and kinda telling them what's going on, and, and like one of the hotels downtown, we talked to them and essentially kinda told them what was going on, so we, we suggested to them to talk to their guests when they check in and tell them, you know, hey, our elevators are sensitive, tell your kids not to jump up and down, please don't overlay, overload the elevators, and essentially, I think that's why we saw our number drop quite a bit to twenty-four, just kinda helping them and spreading some awareness to them. So basically, our objective here, after having the, the training that we needed to, is basically to remove any passengers of a stalled elevator out the doors that they essentially come on. It's gonna be safest for us. So basically, the, at the end goal, we don't wanna put our personnel inside of an elevator shaft, or we don't wanna put the potential occupants inside of the elevator shaft due to all the hazards. The biggest one is gonna be a fall hazard. So essentially, when we get there, kind of on the outside, first thing we do is we see if we have a true emergency, like we talked about while ago, we could actually have somebody in cardiac arrest on an elevator, somebody's sugar gets low, whatever the case is, we can have an emergency inside a stalled elevator. If that's the case, that kinda changes things for us, maybe we need to stabilize the car pretty quick and throw our personnel in, get a paramedic to them. The next thing we're gonna do is verify which elevator stalled, and then step number three, we gotta locate the elevator. Locating it is gonna be whether it's on the second floor or whether it's on the fourteenth floor. We have a couple ways we can do this and some tools to help us locate them. The next thing we're gonna do is we're gonna try the, the fireman's reset on the fire panel on the first floor. If that doesn't work, essentially, we get the passengers to help on the inside by talking to them, there's a couple things we can do, whether it's cycling the stop switch, or a lot of the times, it's the door sensors, we can have you come up to the front doors and push them closed, a lot of times, the elevator reset. The next thing we do is a hard power reset, we've had a really, a lot of good luck by doing this, especially at the hospital, with just, just a, a complete hard power reset, and then turning the power back on, and then everything will be working, elevator's in normal condition, and then we essentially don't have to do anything. The next step would be to manually lower the car, there's a few ways to do this depending on the type of elevator. If it's a traction elevator, it's a little different than a hydraulic, typically, if it's a hydraulic elevator, we can manually lower it on our side every time, so we don't have to put our guys inside the shaft. Then the third type's gonna be a machine roomless elevator. So basically, those are all the steps we go by, and then our last step, if we, if none of those work to get the people off, step number eight is gonna be to make entry inside the elevator shaft and get you out of the top hatch. So for some reason we have to do that, we stabilize the elevator car. Basically, we don't know why the elevator stalled to a certain extent, it could have slack in the system, it could have a broken cable or broken, broken belt, and so basically, we take the, the hazard out by just stabilizing the car exactly where it is, we have a couple pieces of equipment to help us do that, and then we can put our guys safely on top of the elevator and then get you out of the top hatch. Like I said, that's kinda few far in between, that's kind of our last resort that we try to do, it, it doesn't happen a lot. And then we'll lock it out and tag it out and wait for maintenance to come fix it. So these are a little more specialized incidents. The picture on the left is kinda what I talked about while ago, if we had to stabilize an elevator, the, the little orange block on the right goes over top of the roller guards, and basically, it keeps the elevator from coming up. If the elevator has a counterweight, a lot of the times, it's gonna fell up instead of down due to that counterweight pulling it down. And then the, the orange row block on top holds on to the cable grab, and it's gonna lock the emergency brakes if the elevator were to go down. So essentially, we would keep the elevator from coming up or down, it's not gonna move. Now it's safe for us to put our guys on top and to pull people out of the top hatch. The picture in the middle is gonna be where for some reason, we had a handicapped person on the elevator and they couldn't essentially climb, climb out a ladder, we would have to actually rappel down, set up a high point, and basically set up a haul system to lift them out if they couldn't walk up a ladder. The picture on the left is kinda what I talked about while ago, if we had to stabilize an The picture on the right is kind of a, another way for us to kind of put a high point and basically build a system to pull people out. So basically, we, we train kind of for the worst. We prepare for the completely unexpected, and hopefully, a lot of this, you know, we don't have to do it. But if for some reason we have to, we definitely want to do it in training and not the first time out in, in the real world. Okay, so what can you do? General rules, always enter an elevator one at a time. This is for, for some reason, if it shifts a little bit, you don't want to trip coming in or out of the elevator and potentially falling inside the shaft. Never overload an elevator. Like I said, we talked about the placard on the inside. A lot of the times, you can kind of do some rough estimates on people and try to figure out and make sure you're not overloaded. If you do walk into an elevator and it kind of feels overloaded, just take the next one. Never bounce or shake the elevator. This is kind of big, you know, talking to our kids and our teenagers and kind of giving them some awareness on not what to do when we're not there. And it's kind of a fun thing. We see it all the time where some teens, you know, love to get in an elevator and shake it, and then they're stuck. Always use the stairs if there is a fire. If for some reason the elevator does stall and you're inside, the biggest thing is going to be to remain calm. This is going to help not only you, but it's going to help a lot of other people that are in the elevator as well. A lot of the times, we get there, people are just really relieved that we're there, starting on the problem, and it really helps them to remain calm. But if you can remain calm on the inside, that's going to help as well. You can also start by pressing the emergency button on the inside if there is one. That's going to notify the building that you are stuck in the elevator. You can always call nine-one-one as well, kind of tell them what's going on. Always stay inside the stalled elevator until help arrives. I should have put in here, when help arrives, that's typically the fire department or first responders. We had had some issues within the city where maintenance men are helping people get out of the elevators, and they're actually on top of an elevator with the power still on. We're not there yet, so that's a potential hazard. So we always want to wait for first responders, make sure that the scene is safe for essentially for you to get out, unless you're coming out the main doors that you went in on. Basically, at the end of the day, we just want everybody to be safe, and always remember, nobody's still stuck in an elevator. We will get you off, so that's the biggest thing on remaining calm. Does anybody have any questions?
Excellent presentation, LT.
Yeah, thank you.
That was very accurate, and even I understood it.
Cool.
Any other questions?
Yep.
So one structure I'm very worried about, and I know you all are too. I'm looking at the chief back. There's the Roosevelt House.
Yes.
And I know when you get a call of the Roosevelt House, you guys bust it. What steps, if any, in terms of elevators and keeping the people out of elevators if you have a fire, do you take with the Roosevelt House? Do you do anything special? Because that's such a huge structure with so many disabled and elderly people.
Yeah, we have a response strategy. If we were to have a fire there, we'll dedicate one stairwell just for evacuation and one stair for, one stairwell for us working and deploying hoses and stuff. It's going to be definitely organized chaos in that process. But yeah, we did, we dedicate one stairwell just for evacuation. I mean, depending on the location and issue with the fire, I mean, the elevators will still work a lot, you know, but definitely, we, we teach people to, to get in the stairwell in case it does fail, and then we don't have two problems at once.
I appreciate all you do. Glad you're training every day to address that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Chair, I really don't want to tell you that I run the Hampton Inn Suites downtown.
Yeah, gotcha.
We have, we have had, we have had issues, but they're exactly what you are saying, so I just want to share with people. One of the, the most fun things is, is if you're probably anywhere from nine to fifteen years old, is as it's going down, you hit the first floor and you jump. Well, our elevators are calibrated to stop immediately. But on other hands, we have had technical issues, and I just want to say thank you so much. It's very interesting. I've always dreamed, or not dreamed, but dreaded the fact if I got caught on the elevator, you'd have to take me out the shaft, because that hole's not that big. So anyway, just want to commend you because you have, even when the people come off or the kids come off and stuff, y'all are great. You've been there, and I've seen you do some of these very difficult maneuvers sometimes going down in the shaft, so just want to say thank you all.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And to let you know that my budget is significantly less, because a few years ago, I paid fifty-five thousand dollars for repairs.
Yes.
And we kept dogging the company, and we haven't had half as much trouble, but you were always there, so thank you.
Yeah, good deal.
Okay.
Yep, thank you all.
Good job. Hunter Reagan, 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 Reagan. How you doing, man?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. My name's Hunter Reagan. I'm with the City of Owensboro Public Works Sanitation Department, located at fourteen-ten West Fifth Street. Tonight, I will be providing a brief overview of our street sweeper operations. All residential streets in the city are swept three times per year. We break this into three passes. The first pass runs March through May. The second pass covers June through August. And the third pass runs from September through November. In addition to that, our downtown core area, which spans from Triplett Street to Maple Street and from Veterans Boulevard to Fifth Street, is swept on a weekly basis. Then our arterial streets, which include major roadways, are swept twice per month. All street sweeping is performed Monday through Friday, as long as weather conditions allow. The street sweeper operations are aligned with our existing leaf collection zones. This helps our, keep our scheduling and logistics consistent. We update the zones being serviced each week, and residents can find the information easily on the city's website, as shown on the video. We also encourage them to use our information map tool, which makes it easy to locate their zone. This tool has been useful in improving public awareness and reducing service disruptions. Street sweeping in the City of Owensboro is contracted through a company called Sweepball. All equipment is owned and maintained by them, which helps ensure that the service is reliable and efficient. Despite our best efforts, we do face a few reoccurring challenges. Parked vehicles often obstruct our sweepers. Construction zones can limit access and create debris, and of course, weather conditions can delay our schedule. Resident cooperation is essential, and when vehicles are moving and debris is clear ahead of our scheduled routes, we can provide a much more effective and thorough service. For our budget and grant funding, the annual street sweeper operations budget is a hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars a year. This includes eighteen thousand in tipping fees for the disposal of the collected debris. In addition, we receive approximately twenty-seven thousand each year from a litter abatement grant. These funds help support not just operations, but also our community outreach efforts. Our goal with this program is to provide efficient, clean, and environmentally friendly services throughout the city. If residents need further assistance or have questions regarding the street sweeper operations, they can reach us with, that Owensboro Public Works Sanitation Department at two seven zero six eight seven eight seven six zero. Thank you.
Any questions? Chair?
Just have a question, and it's actually from a resident. He, this person approached me at an event and had indicated that the street sweeper does not use water anymore. It's just a dry sweep, and it's putting all the trash up on their porches and type things. And I'm just going by what they said. So I had asked about it, and I was told I'd have the opportunity to ask you about it tonight, so.
We do have water that goes into that, and we fill that tank up, and then if it needs to increase the output on that, if he sees an area that's got a lot more sediment in the curb from like a recent flooding events and whatnot, then it is hard to keep the dust control, just because of that sediment can build up on the bristles whenever it sits there. And, but they do their best to try to maintain that to, so it doesn't affect the residents.
So it is true that it is, it, there is water involved in it, so.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to go back to that resident and, and tell them that, and then, then maybe we can see what's, what's going on for them. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You can thank him for me too, because he called me too.
Oh, they called you too?
Oh, yeah. Okay, man, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Next item on the agenda. Backyard chickens.
I think that's me, Mayor.
You're up.
Yes, sir, thank you. So as you all know, the last several meetings, we've had some members of our community come to our meetings and speak in public comments requesting that we consider allowing chickens in the city. So right now, our ordinance currently prohibits chickens and similar animals, and so you can see the language there, that no person shall keep swine or chickens within the corporate limits of the city. However, this has been a frequent occurrence. I think at least three in the last ten years, three times this has come up. I think there might actually have been a fourth as well, so it's, it's come up relatively frequently over the last decade or so. And in doing some research, as based on our recent discussions, I did email probably fifteen or so other cities. And I did realize that they're, they're correct, and that most of our similar cities actually allow chickens. I think maybe just one or two of the fifteen cities that I talked to prohibit them, and actually, one of them is doing an ordinance this month to allow chickens. That was, I believe, the city of Georgetown is, is doing the same, similar conversation right now. So it is pretty consistent among similar cities like Paducah and Bollering that do allow chickens with reasonable restrictions. And so as we've been having conversations internally over the last two or three months since the presentations began, it was pretty clear there's consensus among the elected officials to consider changing the ordinance. So this is really, I think, the first kind of public discussion of that. So we will talk about a proposed or potential framework of what that might look like, and then we'll largely just put this out for public consumption, seeking feedback. So there's no first reading, no action is imminent at all. It's really just kind of start a discussion with potential regulations today. So if we were to allow ordinance, we would envision a five hen max. Most cities have a similar max of either five or six. That seems to be a pretty common threshold. No roosters, so no crowing, just only hen laying, or egg-laying hens.
Hen-laying eggs.
I'm not a chicken expert. I've gotten to know more than I ever really thought. I've gotten to know more than I ever really cared to know about chickens in the last month or so. But we do, would propose a, a setback from a neighboring house as well, just to ensure neighbors are as protected as possible. Coops would be required. We don't envision free-range chickens or things of that nature in the city. Coops would have to be covered, secure, and things of that nature as well. We would have regulations requiring that the excrement be dealt with appropriately and it not be accumulated. Similarly, feed would not be accumulated. It have to be stored appropriately and covered in some form or fashion. The chickens would be allowed in residential zones only. So in that regard, it is intended as personal use only. This is not commercial production, so it's personal use. Again, any type of production for commercial use would be in a, a different, more of an industrial facility, so this is not what we're talking about in this regard. We would envision requiring a permit. We do that just so we would know where the chickens are. It would be a nominal cost, if any, from our perspective. It's not intended to generate revenue. We would just want to know where the chickens are in case there's any, any issues that we had to deal with. But in that regard, similarly, if there were unpermitted chickens, we do envision having fines in that scenario as well. Frankly, I think there are probably some now, but again, the intent here is really just so we know where they are more so than it is to be any, any financial generator. And then another thing that we've, we've talked about as well is that this would just be a city ordinance. However, some homeowners associations have restrictive covenants. They prohibit the keeping of chickens, and so that would still be in place. This wouldn't overrule a particular HOA rules that, that might prohibit animals, and so this does not override that. So that would still be in place for those neighborhoods that might prohibit them from their homeowners association. So as I referenced earlier, this is only for discussion. It's just a starting point, and I think there's a lot of desire to consider this on your behalf. And so I know that the feedback is, is appreciated, so we created a specific page on the city website. That's Owensboro.org/chickens, and so there's a summary of this information. And there's also the ability to submit feedback, whether you think it's good, whether you think it's bad, whether you think that setback should not be fifty feet, it should be seventy-five feet. You may have some other consideration that we've not thought of, and that would be, be something we would be happy to, to entertain. And so we will, through our communications team, share this on social media and various ways to get feedback. And then we'll just get that and, and kind of process that over the next couple of months, and then probably have a subsequent presentation to summarize the feedback that we've received. And then we'll see guidance from the members of the Board of Commissioners at that point, whether you want to proceed or not. So Mayor, at a high level, that's, that's what we think is the process going forward, and happy to address any questions you might have. Or again, one of the advocates is here today, so should she have any comments or questions, that would be, be relevant as well.
You good? Okay. No questions?
I just have one request, and that is Nate, you said you'd talk to other cities. It would be helpful to hear, just in a short aggregate, maybe a summary in future meetings of how long have they had the ordinance? Because I know some of them have had twenty years or more. And then the second is, have they had to go back and make any changes, or is it like we passed it and we forgot about it type thing?
Yeah, that's a good question. I didn't, I didn't ask the, the length of time that they've been in place, but I did ask for just general feedback, issues or any, any recommendations that they would have. And so largely, that informed a lot of the setbacks and distances, you know, that was based on information that, that they provided. A lot of them said, I think that when they did it at first, that there was sort of a larger number that did it, but then relatively few that did it long term, and that it was relatively minimal in its, in its impact. And frankly, a lot of them said they hadn't really dealt with it in several years since they enacted the ordinance. So I, I don't anticipate any major problems based on the feedback that I received from other cities.
No comment? Okay. Moving right along. Good job, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Next is the project list. That's, yes, add that to my, to my resume. So city project list is next. It's in your pocket as it is every month. Really, nothing I'll, I'll highlight. With one exception, I believe the pickleball project is scheduled to go out for bids this month, so I saw final design plan. So I know Amanda is working closely with the River City Pickleball Club to finalize that and get that out for public consumption and then out for bid, so we can hopefully start construction later this construction season. Other than that, happy to address any questions should you have them.
So the senior citizen center is on track then?
It is on track. I think the excavation is ongoing and the building pad hopefully will be ready by the end of the month.
And the indoor sports facility?
Indoor sports facility is also going well. I think they're largely, the below-ground elements are done, and they should also start pouring foundational elements hopefully this week, I believe. So hopefully, you'll see things going up a lot quicker now once they get out of the ground.
Progress. Good job. Okay. Next item on the agenda is to consider the approval of minutes. On July the first, two thousand twenty-five, I'll make a motion to approve these minutes. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion deletions or additions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item five B. I'd like for you to consider these board appointments, please. Owensboro, excuse me, Apollo Area Neighborhood Alliance reappoint Loretta Shell and to a two-year term effective July the twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Shively York Neighborhood Alliance reappoint Debbie Barker and Miranda Barker to a two-year term effective July the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. And the old Owensboro Neighborhood Alliance appoint Derek Kane to a two-year term effective July the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. I'll entertain a motion to approve these, please.
Second.
Thank you.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item six, Ms. Davis, this is a first read and there will be no vote.
Ordinance ten dash twenty twenty-five and ordinance amending chapter three, article three, section three dash fifty-seven of the Owensboro Municipal Code relating to the Entertainment Destination Center to allow it to be enjoyed at all times alcoholic beverages are sold. Introduced and publicly read on first reading this fifteenth day of July, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you. City manager, please.
Yes, sir. So in two thousand eighteen, the Board of Commissioners passed an ordinance creating an entertainment destination center, or what we call the district, which allows alcohol to be open-carry downtown in the green cups that we've all become familiar with. So initially, the district was only active during special events. After monitoring that for a year or two in two thousand twenty, the ordinance was amended to allow the district to be active all weekends and then during the week when special events were taking place. At the request of downtown businesses, however, this is first reading of an ordinance allowing the district to be open and active anytime is sold. So essentially, this is allowed now, but it requires a permit during the week. Most other cities have subsequently gone to a seven-day-a-week type of structure for their entertainment destination center, or what we call the district. So really, this would only streamline what happens now, so they have to pull a permit in order for that to be active during the week. And so we will make it easier for those events and less paperwork for us to track, frankly. And so this would allow the district to be active anytime alcohol is sold.
Okay, discussion? Thank you. Okay, we'll go to personnel appointments. City manager?
Yes, so quite a few personnel appointments for your consideration this evening. Ron Roberts, probationary full-time non-silver service appointment to mechanic with the maintenance garage effective July twenty-eighth, contingent upon successful completion of all post offer pre-employment requirements. And Megan Bryan and Colby Chapman and Zachary Farmer, probationary full-time non-silver service appointments to officer with the police department effective August fourth. Joseph Riley, Jody Crowe. Joseph Riley, Jody Crowe, and William Harden, probationary, and Bryce Pate, excuse me, probationary full-time non-civil service appointment to officer with the Police Department effective August fourth. That's contingent upon successful completion of all post offer pre-employment requirements. And you may notice that was seven new police officers we're hiring, and that will comprise Class Three of the local OPD Academy. For promotional status, we have Edgardo Nevis, probationary full-time non-civil service appointment to bus driver with the Transit Department effective twenty-eighth. And then for regular status, having completed their probationary periods, we have Joseph Wright, regular full-time non-civil service appointment to captain with the Fire Department effective July twenty-eighth. Matthew Sisso, regular full-time non-civil service appointment to captain with the Fire Department effective July twenty-eighth. And Christopher Webster, regular full-time non-civil service appointment to IT Applications Business Analyst Manager with the IT Department effective July twenty-eighth.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the status of these new hires in probationary. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. City Manager comments?
No other comments tonight.
Communication from elected officials. Commissioner Glenn.
Got three items. So the first is, I want to extend a heartfelt thank you to Adrian Carrico and Beth in their coordination of the neighborhood alliances. We, old Owensboro, had their first meeting after being reconstituted as a board, and it was a very active and energetic group. Young man's here. Glad to have him with us. I want to recognize the great work that Dugan Best did this weekend. They had their gala at the park, I think that went well. And then finally, Dogwood Azalea is also fairly new and reorganizing and starting up. So the neighborhood alliances are moving in a great direction, and I do want to compliment the mayor because he has directed that momentum, and so I'm excited to see that. The second item is the bridge. We've had a lot of people on Facebook and even face-to-face who've said, "The city shut the bridge down." The city didn't shut the bridge down. In fact, I'm sure every one of us up here would love to have the bridge open now. But I will say that it better safe than sorry. We want to make sure that bridge works for the next, you know, twenty, thirty, whatever number of years, and the state has mandated that that work be done, and it is an inconvenience. I encountered it today. I had to go over to Newburgh for some business. And I, you know, I feel and have empathy for those who travel that route every day and now have to make changes. But the city certainly is with you. We want to get that done as quickly as possible, but we also do not want a key bridge incident where if a boat hits the bridge, it collapses. We don't want an incident totally unfathomed in Minneapolis where a bridge collapsed. So the state is doing the right thing. It is painful, I agree, but it is not anything that the city has any control over. It is the state's bridge, and they are doing what they feel is a wise move to get it repaired. And then finally, the Dust Bowl this Friday starts. That's an exciting community event in the northwest end of our community. I'd encourage you, if you get a chance, to take a few hours out, maybe go watch some pretty good basketball and support that event. And that's all I've got. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Commissioner Maglinger?
Thank you, Mayor. No comments.
Mr. Neesmith?
I'd just like to share, in case, if any of you all have not, if you're not following bluegrass, Rick Ferris, our luthier here in Owensboro and has his own shop downtown. He just had a number-one hit on the bluegrass music chart, which is, you know, we get real excited about rock and roll music charts and that type thing, but I think we should share that. And he had some type of a little reception the other day and sang the song. It was very beautiful. And one of the things he also shared is the IBMA Music Awards. It's in September of this year, and the first guitar that was actually built in Owensboro will be given away as something at that awards. So I thought it was pretty significant that we would be represented. That'll be in the Carolinas is where that would be. And it was nice, and also just for, just because it was interesting, he calls that guitar the oak, and he's very sad about agreeing to donate it, but I think we should give him a hand. He's got a great family. He brings his bands here, and he's got a great idea of how to keep us growing in that area of bluegrass.
You supposed to clap now? Commissioner Sanford?
Just one thing, Mayor. Just a little clarification. I guess last week in the paper, there was something about a proposed site for transitional recovery housing, which is on West Parish, which Facebook, once again, it's actually in the county. So if you were to have a problem with that, you would need to contact the County Commissioner or the judge or Owensboro Planning Commission. It's not the city. So sometimes people get confused of who's doing what. It's not us. It's something that's happening in the county. So I just wanted to make that clarification for people.
Okay.
Thank you.
I failed to mention that Barbara and I are great-grandparents. We have a little boy, Baker, named Seven Pound Seven Bounces, born in room number seven. He weighs about twenty-five pounds now. He's tripled in size. And we have another one coming in this, two days from, so she doesn't look like it, but I do look like I have great-grandparents, so just wanted to share that with the community because it's pretty special for us. Okay, item nine, open public forum. Members of the audience may address the Board of Commissioners on any item not of public concern that was not on the agenda. Comments are limited to issues within the scope and responsibility of the Commission. Commission meetings are held to conduct city business for the benefit of Owensboro's citizens and taxpayers. At this time, anyone who wishes to address the City Commission, please make your way to the podium to be recognized. Speakers must state their name and address for the clerk's record and limit their remarks to three minutes or less. Since item's not on the agenda, no response is required from staff or the Commissioners. The Mayor reserves the right to extend the time of the speaker, so. Oh, okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Pam Smith-Wright, thirty-five twenty, Christie Place. I'm here tonight to ask for a space in Smothers Park near the Shelton Memorial for a monument dedicated to the women who have served our country. It has been called, it will be called the Oberst Hayden Women's Memorial. It will be named in honor of two Owensboro servicewomen and dedicated to all women who have served. The first one is Mary Josephine Oberst. She was born in Davis County on December the fifteenth, nineteen thirteen. She graduated from Saint Francis Academy in Owensboro in June of nineteen thirty-two and received her RN from Saint Joseph's Infirmary in Louisville, Kentucky in nineteen thirty-six and remained there in the medical surgical ward and operation room until she entered the Army Nurse Corps in November of nineteen thirty-seven. Overseas duty took her to Estrada Major, and on December the twenty-fifth, nineteen forty-one, excuse me, to Batman Hospital Number Two. On April ninth, nineteen forty-two, she and the other Angels of Baton were moved to the Melina Tunnel Corrugator. After captured on May sixth, nineteen forty-two, the nurses were sent to Santa Catalina Hospital in De San Jose. Then she was recalled back to Santo Thomas, where she remained until the Forty-Fourth Tank Brigade freed the prisoners on February third, nineteen forty-five. After returning to the States, her nursing duties took her to Nichols in Louisville, Fort Knox, Ashford General in West Virginia, and back to Fort Knox. After retirement from the U.S. Army, on September the thirtieth, nineteen forty-seven, she worked at Mercy Hospital here in Owensboro. She died November the thirteenth, two thousand nine. Her military awards include the Bronze Star, the Distinguished Unit Emblem with two Bronze Stars, the American Defense Service Medal with Foreign Service Clasp, the Philippine Defense Ribbon, the Philippine Liberation Ribbon with Bronze Star, the World War II Medal with two Bronze Stars, and a Battle Star. The second person is Vivian Hayden Lawton. She was born October the thirteenth, nineteen twenty, in Owensboro, and she died April twenty-fourth, nineteen sixty-six. Mrs. Hayden Lawton was part of the was part of the
Go ahead.
Six-eighty-eight, six-triple-eight Central Postal Directive Battalion that cleared a backlog of seventeen million pieces of mail between soldiers and their families in just three months in nineteen forty-five. She was part of the only all-black Women's Army Corps Battalion to serve overseas in World War II. The six-triple-eight is a movie directed by Tyler Perry on Netflix. After the backlog of mail in Birmingham, England had been cleared, the six-triple-eight crossed the English Channel to Le Havre, France on June eighth, nineteen forty-five, and was transported by train to France to deal with another backlog of mail there. Some letters were three years old. In October of nineteen forty-five, five months after the war in Europe ended, the six-triple-eight marched through the streets of Paris and were housed in a luxurious hotel. And Hayden Lawton was the first black woman from the Owensboro area to enlist in the Women's Army Corps. She graduated from Western High School in nineteen forty-one. Her awards and decorations include the six-triple-eight Central Post Directory Battalion Award. She is listed in the notable Kentucky African-American database, and we think these two awesome women, along with other women veterans, deserve a spot on our beautiful riverfront to be recognized with all of our other veterans. Fundraising for this monument has already started. I have Lou Droudie here, who is our legislative delegate, and we would thank you for your consideration for this spot downtown near the Shelton Memorial. Thank you.
Anyone else?
William Brown, one thirteen East Second Street. I'm here to just mention a quality-of-life thing for, as a resident
Kind of get closer to the mic if you could, please.
Yep. I'm here to just talk about a quality-of-life situation as a resident and a business owner. Our condo backs up to the parking garage, and it's gotten progressively worse over the last six to twelve months. At nighttime, it's crazy the amount of racing that goes on in that parking garage. The sounds that come from it. We've got friends in Parkside that will text. Sometimes I get a text at two in the morning from them saying, "Can you believe the noise that's coming from that garage?" And last night alone, I was sitting on the patio, and somebody came barreling around the corner, and there was two people walking for exercise, and they missed them luckily, but it was kind of the final straw. And I don't know if there's something where, if the cameras work in there, or they don't, or if there can be just more police presence from time to time. Because I don't want to have to call the, you know, police station all the time when it goes on, but it's absolutely crazy the amount of noise and what goes on in that garage. The litter that's thrown over the edge of the garage, you know, it's everywhere in that alley. So it's, it makes living downtown less fun, so. Anyway, just want to tee that up for you guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Stay here.